Motion has been seconded and approved. I need a motion to approve the minutes on the January 18th for the 2023 regular board meeting and the January 25th, 2022 special board meeting.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 18th meeting and also the January 25th, 2022 special call board meeting.
Sir.
Yes, the move is second to approve the minutes of the previous two meetings. We now have public input.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Randy?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Both in. The motion has been seconded and approved. Do we have any public input?
No way.
We now have the financial report.
Thank you, Chair. One of the members of the commission board. I'd like to begin tonight by providing you with an update on the general and enterprise fund financials for the period of July 1, 2021 through January 31, 2022. Global revenues for the general fund for the seven-month period was 8.27 million compared to 8.03 million around this time last year. That represents a $238,000 increase in revenues or approximately a 2.95% increase. Program revenue continues to be the largest driver of this increase since there was a program-related decrease in program revenue in early fiscal year 21. The categories of program revenue where we saw the greatest increases were perks and rental revenue. We saw a $113,000 increase. Reparational youth camp revenue, we saw a $90,000 increase in athletic and recreational revenues. We saw a $59,000 increase. Our total general fund expenditures for this period were 7.85 million compared to 7.69 million around this time last year. Represents approximately 2.06% increase or $159,000. As in previous periods, the biggest driver would be capital improvement expenditures, followed by programming expenditures. I did provide a breakdown of the transactions that make up the capital improvement accounts. If you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer those. Enterprise fund revenues for the current period were $587,000 compared to $574,000 this time last year. Represents approximately 2.16% increase or $12,000 increase. Membership and program revenues were largely the driver for the increase. And enterprise fund expenses for the period were $637,000 compared to $524,000 around this time last year. Represents approximately a 21.5% increase or $113,000 increase. Biggest driver for that increase was the capital outlay expense. Mainly, there was repair work done for the sand traps and also a roofing repair for the clubhouse. Again, I did provide a breakdown in your packet of the transactional data. Were there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just moving to the next presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Ally Rivers. I'm with the Hobbs Group. I worked on the audit of the commission for the year ended June 30th, 2021. I wanted to go over the audit with you. I know it's February 2022, and I don't want to confuse the numbers that Brian just told you all, but I am going to briefly go over some year-end figures from 2021. But first, I wanted to let you know how the audit went. We issued this audit November 16th, 2021. It's been a while since we issued. We did issue in a timely manner to get it to the county. We get the commission to roll it up into the county's cap or so. We did get it done in a timely manner during the year specifically at year end. There was turnover in the finance department. So when Brian came on, he was kind of wasn't aware of what happened during fiscal year that we were auditing. So he was very helpful in getting all the information that we request. And as auditors, we request a lot of information. So thank you for getting it to us timely. There were some material audit adjustments required specifically primarily due to the turnover in management that was experienced right at that year-end cutoff. So that's basically how the audit went. I think it went really well. As far as numbers, I'm not going to dive into the audit too much. We didn't get a clean opinion on the audit. So we call it an unmodified opinion, the highest opinion you can get. As far as the numbers go, at June 30th, your cash was very favorable at 13.8 million. Your total annual expenses were right there at 19.4, so extremely good cash position. Of those annual expenditures, about half a million was spent on capital outlay and improvements. As far as your revenues go, your enterprise fund, which is the Linnery golf course, experienced about a million dollars in revenue in 2021, which is a major increase from the previous year. And it resulted in about a break-even point for the golf course this year, whereas in the previous year, there was about a $35,000 loss. So much improvement in the Linnery enterprise fund. As far as the general fund, about $17.4 million of your total revenue is from property taxes. So you're about 90% taxpayer-funded of your total expenses. And that is as of June 30th, 2021. So I'm sorry to confuse some numbers that Ryan just stood out for the current year, but I just wanted to go over those numbers. Anybody have any questions for me regarding the audit?
We're located.
We're located in Columbia. We're right off Laurel Street. This is about our fifth year doing the audit for y'all. I think it's up to them. Thank you for your time. Remember the question?
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair. Next, Madam Chair, we have another presentation that will follow the refunding of Series 2012 geobots and the financial advisors first try.
My name is Jordan Kaiser. We're First Line Advisors. We serve as financial advisor to the commission. We're based out of Charlotte and wanted to come down and just briefly go over potential refunding opportunity for the commission's 2012 and 2014 general obligation bonds. Sorry about that. And so we've got a presentation up here on the screen. Just a brief overview. So the general obligation bond is potentially a type of bond that is backed by the full face and credit taxing power of the stable government or special purpose district. All available revenue, all available sources of revenue must sufficiently limit and may used to pay that service, which are principal and interest on the bonds. But taxes are required to be levied in the amount sufficient to pay the debt service if necessary. So there is actually typically two types of general obligation bonds. There are what we call new money bonds, which are issued to fund capital projects, capital improvements, acquisitions, et cetera, or refunding bonds, which are issued to redeem or refinance previously issued bonds. So that would be talking to you about are simply refunding bonds. So on the screen here, this is a summary of the outstanding general obligation bonds of the commission. You can see here that there's Series 2012 bonds and Series 2014 bonds. The 2012 bond originally issued in December of 2012 in the amount of $13 million. 2014 bonds were originally issued in July of 2014 in the amount of $25.595 million. The 2012 bond as of today have about $7.135 million remaining to be paid on them. 2014 bonds have about 20, just over $22 million outstanding. So on the screen here, I'm not sure if you can see it, but it highlighters kind of circled in red and you can see the principal and interest, the debt service payments on each of these series bonds. So on the 2012 bonds, the commission is currently paying 700, an average of $753,666 per year of principal interest on those bonds. The 2014 bonds, the commission is paying an average of almost $2.5 million per year. And then the next page is the same information, but I've got highlighted here the maturities that are able to be redeemed or refunded. So as you can see here on the 2012 bonds, the maturities from 2023 to 2032 are able to be redeemed. On the 2014 bonds, the maturities from 2025 to 2032 are able to be redeemed. So this, the next slide here is a 20-year look back of interest rates.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Absolutely.
He just mentioned something that I don't quite understand. You said that 2014 bonds maturity is to 2025 to 2030 or something like that?
Yeah, sure.
Can you just explain what that means?
Absolutely.
In these terms?
Yeah, so the 2012 bonds and the 2014 bonds, the commission will need to pay principal and interest payments on those until March 1st of 2032. Both of those bond, both of those series of bonds happened to fully mature on the same date, March 1st, 2032. Each of those series of bonds have specific dates aligned to them. We call them call dates, which is the date that allows you to come in and redeem outstanding maturities. So both of the bonds mature fully in March 1st of 2032. The Series 2012 bonds have a call date upcoming in March 1st of 2022, meaning that every mid-
Is it fully amortized out, done?
Well, it's still, again, if nothing changes, the bond payments continue to be made until 2032. However, we've reached the date at which we can, the commission can redeem that for a lower, at a lower interest rate. And on the 2014 bonds, similarly, they have a call date as well. Their call date is a little bit further out. It's on March 1st, 2024. Meaning that the bonds appearing in 2025 through 2032 can be redeemed.
Lawrence, so just to quickly interject on that. So the difference when you sell your bonds, so bonds as we talked about before, fancy term for just a loan of the commission. And so you have several series of these outstanding obligations that are all outstanding. But unlike the mortgage on your house, when we sell bonds in the capital markets for a public body, they're sold on a tax exempt basis. And so a lot of times they're sold with what we call call protection. And so that means when the bondholders go when they buy them, they're looking to buy and hold that security for a really long period of time. So unlike the mortgage on your house where when interest rates drop and you go and you pay your mortgage broker and you could refund for savings anytime that it's otherwise available to you. In the bond market, when we do public market securities like your debt is, you have to basically negotiate those sale provisions on the front end of the borrowing. And so when he talks about call provision, bonds are typically sold with a 10-year kind of redemption like that. And so we're getting into that redemption window where it actually makes sense. The rates when you sold your bonds originally were high. Now they're lower and they're also subject to call because they're very close to that 10-year term. So just to add a little color to it, to make sure that it's a little different than y'all would probably be used to seeing on the traditional mortgage on your house.
So how's the game played? If you have the lower rates coming for that window, let's say, that 10-year window, are people buying those bonds out on the market?
They are.
From us?
They are.
So we sell them?
That's right. So bonds are actually sold in two different kind of methodologies in local banks. So you have what they're actually proposing here, which is the idea of taking your outstanding bonds and selling them to a local bank in a single borrowing. And the reason we would do that is you think about this, we sold these original bonds in 2012 and 2014, and they went out till 2032. And that 2032 window is a 20-year window. And most of the banks won't lend you money for that 20-year period of time because they, especially in today's day and age, interest rates, there's just a lot of variability to interest rate margins. And so they're looking to kind of keep their interest in that these types of aren't relatively short. And so they keep it to about 10 years.
So theoretically, as interest rates are going to go up over the next 10 years, then the bond's a good avenue for an investor.
Yes.
Because they will be able to get that money at a theoretically a lower rate than a traditional bond, I guess.
So, you know, obviously, they're, the bond market moves in the inverse of the equity market, is kind of the way we see things working. But in this particular circumstance, what we're simply trying to do, so these bonds are actually sold in capital markets. So they have a little bit more restrictions on them than it would be if you were to sell them to a local bank. And so they basically bid in a higher interest cost or higher coupons, the interest amounts on the front end of this, of the maturities, because they didn't know you can't take them. And so after that 10-year window, you actually see in most of the marketing documents, the bonds are kind of priced or sold to what we call a par haul. And so they're, all of this is kind of basically built in because we recognize that looking out now, at 10 years after you've been paying on the bonds, the risk associated with having 20-year bonds is obviously much, you know, would generally be speaking, is higher than it would be a 10-year bond. And so in this circumstance, you're actually getting a 10-year rate when previous sort of fund 20-year bond. So you're taking even higher interest rates and reducing loan rates. And one thing I just also wanted to make sure, and we didn't, Jordan didn't touch on it when we went through the first slide. Typically, when you issue general obligation bond, remember, you're an independent special purpose district. You're not subject to the oversight, control of county council. The one thing we know we have to get approval of from county council is on your budget and when you issue bonds. Because we're doing, we're funding bonds on just simply saving the taxpayers' money by taking interest rates from a higher level to a lower level, you do not have to go through county council for the approval. So in making this presentation tonight and disclosing what we believe is savings in the market for fund the bonds, the idea would be, you could make, you know, you present this tonight, we come back at the meeting in March, assuming the commission is comfortable with it, and rates stay in a position where we can actually save the money. And we would take board action at that time to go out to the market, solicit bids, lock in those bids, and we would know definitively at that time how much savings could otherwise be incurred. And without that savings, you're not committing to anything. It's basically an opportunity to go shopping and say, okay, Mr. Bank, rates are lower than they were, you know, 10, 12 years ago when we issued this debt. What can you do for them now? If the rates don't look good, then Jordan, his team will kick all the bids out and we won't have to do anything. You just keep your bonds outstanding and just pay the interest rates that you have. But if we can capture that savings, we'll make, we'll make the most of captured and saved.
Question. And so for right now, we're talking about the 2012 bonds, correct? Because the call date for 2014, we aren't there yet.
Well, and so that's, that's a really interesting question, and I don't want to jump on Jordan's toes. He's run through a slide, but hold that one and we'll come back to it.
Yeah, so just real quickly, just to kind of touch on Lawrence's point right here, this is a 20-year look back of tax exempt interest rates. The two line is the 10-year tax exempt rate. The orange line is a 30-year, is 30-year. So as you can see, the first two arrows are kind of the approximate times that 2012 bonds were issued and the 2014 bonds were issued. And then the box all the way to the right, along with that arrow, represents kind of where we, we are right around today's market. So as you can see, we are in a lower interest rate environment than we were in 2012 and 2014, which we hope would, would lead to us be able to, being able to refund the outstanding bonds at lower interest rates and, you know, lower those debt service payments. So we're going to talk about two scenarios. The first scenario would be just refunding the Series 2012 bonds. And again, those are the ones that are callable or redeemable here on March 1st of, here a few weeks. Next month. So this table, the place to look here is down kind of in the bottom right-hand corner. You can see the cash flow savings. The average annual savings that we think, if we could go out to banks and a bank gave us a 1.75% interest rate to refund these bonds, we think that it would save the commission about $23,411 per year in annual debt service payments. Obviously, like Lauren said, I mean, we don't, we don't know exactly what type, what interest rate we're going to get from banks. We thought that this 1.75% was maybe a good estimate to use based on what we're seeing in the current market. And, you know, hopefully, we could get something that's even lower than that. But, but just to show you a number that we believe does achieve pretty significant savings is that 1.75%. So again, that would lower the commission's debt service payments by just over $23,000 per year. And, and Lauren, please just correct me if I'm wrong here, but after that was done in this scenario, the bond, you know, the payments would remain on the same dates and they would, the final maturity would not change. They would continue to be on March 1, 2032, and the bond would continue to be considered tax exempt bonds.
That's exactly right. So this is what we call just a traditional high-low refund. You take an outstanding bond issue with a higher interest rate and you replace it with a bond issue with a lower interest rate. And you only do it to the extent that you have savings. And so that would, that would be what would be proposed here. And we'll get into a little distinction here, and it was just the question you were just about to ask, he's about that, he's about to run through it. And so there it is.
Yep, so scenario two would be continued to refund Series 2012 bonds, just like we did in scenario one, but we would also include a refunding of Series 2014 bonds. And we would do that all kind of in one, in one transaction. The Series 2012 bonds, we would again kind of estimate that 1.75% tax exempt interest rate from a bank. 2014 bonds, since that call date or redemption date is a couple of years out, we would need to ask for taxable interest rates in that scenario, which would mean that the interest rate would be a little bit higher than that 1.75%. For, in this analysis, in this analysis, we've assumed a 2.32% interest rate. So if we're able to go out and get a tax exempt rate of 1.75% for the 2012 refunding and a 2.32% interest rate for the 2014 refunding, we think that in total, we could save, the commission could lower its debt service payments by an average of about $73,000 per year.
Which is a pretty big savings. And here is the question that the commission has ultimately tackled. So the 2012 is kind of a no-go. The general rule of thumb that we say is you can save 3% or more of the aggregate interest costs it's worth doing, and you're at that 3% threshold. The 14s are being proposed for a variety of reasons, but there are some factors that you need to weigh and consider in making the decision. So as he alluded to, both of the original bonds were done on a tax exempt basis. And that, and that is because you, as a governmental body, when you pay the interest income to the bondholders that purchase your bonds, they don't have to pay federal income taxes on it. That's the reason you actually get a reduced interest rate. So the idea, if you think about it, you're in a 30% or 35% tax bracket, like a bank would be, the bank is going to take away or give you a discount of 35% or something around that range to make up for the difference between what they're having to pay or not have to pay in income taxes. So when you sell taxable bonds, like any other borrowing that you would otherwise have, that's the reason that the interest rate is higher. So you actually question yourself, well, why can't we do the 2012 refunding on a tax exempt basis, but we can't do the 2014s? Well, the reason for that is there's a tax rule. And the tax rule says that you cannot redeem bonds on a tax exempt basis outside of 90 days in advance of their call date. And so as Jordan said earlier, that original, the optional, first optional call date for the 14 bonds is in March of '24, correct?
Correct.
So in order to be able to refund those bonds on a tax exempt basis, we'd have to be, you know, we'd have to fast forward into March or February of 2024. But what we can do instead is issue bonds on a taxable basis. And then you set those proceeds aside in an escrow, it's invested, hopefully at a higher interest rate. And we have what's called an escrow deposit that has some negative earnings on it. And so you're, you've got that money part, so you'll have effectively two series of bonds out there. The 14s will stay outstanding and then be taken away in 2024 when that first option call date comes. So there's some additional costs associated with it, but the risk hedge that you're looking at is saying, okay, you know, we've been in a historic period of interest rate lows. Like everyone in the room who hasn't refunded their mortgage at this point or hasn't refinanced their mortgage has left money on the table. And the concern is, is that rates are going to start moving against us. And so the savings that are here today by refunding these bonds on a taxable basis, they may be here in 2024, and you could do it on a tax exempt basis, but they may not. And so the question is, do you lock in the burden of hand today and know that you have additional savings on a fairly significant amount of money? We're talking $20 some odd million and lock that savings in for an aggregate savings today that we know we can ensure? Or do we only do the 12 bonds, save that money and roll the dice and see if interest rates hold up into 2024 where we would come back and do this as a separate series, assuming they're funding fair? But it could be that the Fed raises interest rates 10 times between now and then, and with 1970 all over again, and rates go to 17%. Don't hold me to that. But that, but that's the risk that you ultimately run. So there's a little bit of a hedge that we need to figure out. And the good news is, again, is we can bid this out, see how the savings come in, and y'all can decide, you know what, let's hold off on that. Let's not decide to do the 14s. Let's only do the 12s. Or hey, that's really good savings. You know, he's, he's projecting on a conservative basis, an aggregate savings on both of these loans of nearly three-quarters of $1 million, $750,000 over the life of our loans, which is, you know, that's money that your taxpayers would otherwise be paying over the life of these remaining loans that you would be locking in and not- Over the life of these remaining loans that you would be locking in and not having to pay to some nameless, faceless bank, maybe that rich. You're saving the taxpayer dollars. So that's the, that's the choice that y'all ultimately are going to be wrestling with, assuming you decided it makes sense to move forward.
Yeah, I think that that's, that pretty much covers everything. Just to, just again to. You know, to emphasize that, you know, the interest rates that we're assuming in here, you know, obviously are subject to change based on, based on uh what banks would come back with. You know, but these are what we think are pretty good estimates. Um, I think at, at this point, we did provide a, you know, a sample, a calendar um for, for what would be next steps if we decided to move forward with this. Um, and as we see here, what we would recommend would be to go out with a request for proposals from banks. Uh, as early as tomorrow if we wanted to. And just again, like Lauren said, just kind of ask banks for, for both tax exempt interest rates and taxable interest rates and just kind of see what. What we get back and uh, you know, the commission can fit, can kind of determine at that point the best course of action. Or is there anything to add on the, on the calendar?
So, so I think that's exactly right. If, if we, we come out of the presentation today, you know, obviously no commitment. No one needs to say, hey, go forward, you know, we're, we're going to go with about twenty five million dollars. It would be, let's send it out to the banks. Let's get the kind of the, the preliminary response back from them. And then at your meeting in March, assuming the numbers held out. And we were able to say kind of somewhere in the neighborhood of what is otherwise being proposed. We would have what we call a bond resolution to authorize the issuance of the refunding bonds at that time. Um, and we would commit to taking out the bonds on a, a, in two series, either a tax exempt and a taxable piece. Or just a tax exempt, depending on what ultimately made the most financial sense to.
And the question, when you do that, when you send out a call to the banks, will they give consideration to what's for the clean audit? Or the credit rating and that building?
Absolutely so. And if this is more in Jordan's line, but I'll, I've never not tried to be a financial advisor before. Um, so the, the district has historically had really, really strong financials, you know, on paper. You know, you are effectively run exclusively through your tax dollars. You know, you have a little bit of gain receipts for revenue that you generate from working activities. But generally speaking, you're the tax base. And your tax base is, is Richland County, you know, unincorporated Richland County. Uh, you've had, had historically very high uh tax recovery. And I believe you're a double A rated credit with, with.
Yeah, I believe it's double A two by Moody's and double A plus by, by S and P, which we would absolutely include in the R.
So on, on paper, if someone's looking at you, you're as financially secure as the federal government. Because I think S and P now has the US, United States as a double A plus. Um, so you have effectively the highest level of credit rating possible. When we sell to the banks, they typically do their own internal credit ratios. And make determinations to, to lend money. The good news is, is the term, the, this, this kind of residual ten to twelve year term. Um, and the amount is going to drive some of the really big banks into the mix. And so, you know, sometimes. You know, we have a, a, a core group of local banks that will come and bid on, you know, a, a hundred thousand dollar fire truck. We can't buy a fire truck for a hundred thousand dollars anymore, a million dollar fire truck. Uh, but when we start getting into these numbers, you start bringing in the JP Morgans. And the Bank of Americas, folks that have an appetite for a little bit bigger paper. They're going to be a lot more keen on your underlying credit ratings, looking at your history, your historical payment structure. And we're going to make them fight one another to give you the absolute lowest call possible.
So in March, you don't come back and present and we give you an answer then?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, so ideally, the, the, the thought would be, again, we want to solve for that kind of three percent threshold. You know, we would go ahead and prepare documents. Cause the, the thing we want to do, once we go out. Once we, you know, on, once they have committed funds or once they have locked in the rates. What you don't want to have is, is some delay where the Fed then comes out the next day and raises rates and gives them some opportunity to adjust their numbers. So we kind of want to be able to move really quickly on it. But while rates were good and while we had the proposal in hand, the thought was, let's come and present the idea, assuming the commission is comfortable with it. We'll go out there, we'll solicit the bids. Nothing will be committed until we come back. And we'll have hard numbers in hand for y'all to make a decision on uh for the meeting come March. Everyone go with that?
So no action needs to be taken? We're just?
So, so as, as far, as far as we're concerned, we can, we'll put in the bid specifications. It's, you know, final approval is subject to uh action taken at the, at the next regular commission meeting. Um, and we'll likely set the bid arrangements so that the bids fall due. On, on maybe the morning of the board meeting. So we could come in that night, make a determination whether we want to accept or not. We can approve the bond resolution, go ahead and wrap all the documents up in anticipation of a refunding, and then y'all make a decision. Um, yeah, as to whether or not it ultimately makes good financial sense to you.
They come back in March?
Yeah, sounds good.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the board. Um, I met with the mayor of Eastover, Captain Connor. Um, of the Richland County Sheriff's Department, Region Eight. Um, also Felicia Venable, Ira Thomas, Joseph Key, and Jacorya Hayes and myself. We met on January thirty first at six thirty via Zoom. Uh, we discussed with Mayor Gunter and Captain Connor uh the concerns. And uh they still would like to have alcohol at the event. We do have on the phone tonight Veronica Owling, who is the clerk for the town of Eastover. Ms. Veronica, can you hear me?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, you now have the attention of the board. And they are listening. If you could give just a little bit of background about the barbecue festival.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity. Um, little bit of uh background about the barbecue festival. It's been going on for uh forty two years. This will be the forty third year. And uh normally it's uh the parade on Saturday. What we call a jam fest. And um, on that Friday night, we had that concert in Gaston. Um, around the Kingville area, uh we actually rented out a space. So we had some residents of town that would like to see the event, the jam fest. Uh, held in the town of Eastover. And, and that was. How we decided to approach the park and ask for permission to have it there. Um, on last year, uh we had Richland County Sheriff's Department. And I'll tell you what our plan is for this year is to have eight officers from Richland County Sheriff's Department. And they will be monitoring the crowd and um also enforcing the law. They will assist if any patron needs to be detained. And we don't foresee any problems. Because on last year, the uh event went without any, any type of problems. We didn't have any problems. We would also be hiring um is uh hotel protective services. We had them on last year with eight officers. Um, they assist with parking. Um, we're going to enforce a clear bag policy. We're going to have a checkpoint. Um, and all patrons must enter through one gate. Um, we're going to have um crowd control using event staff. We're going to have about ten of those um persons on duty. And um also. Uh, hotel uh protective services will provide barricades. That will help maintain crowd, crowd control. Um, we will also place temporary fencing. Um, in places to also control um entry and exiting. There will be um, our plan is to have two Richland County Sheriff's deputies at the entry point with their blue lights on. Uh, we'll have three controlling incoming traffic and three walking among the crowd. Um, and then in addition, with the extra security. They would coordinate with Richland County Sheriff's Department. Prior to the event to implement a plan for crowd control. And an emergency plan in case, you know, of any emergencies. At the end of the event, all officers will be assisting in uh clearing the area. In a safe and timely manner. Um, a detailed security and emergency response plan can be provided if necessary. Um, the jam fest consists of an older crowd and the music will cater to an older crowd. Uh, last year, the crowd was calm. Um, and you know, the, the patrons just was there to have a good time. There were no problems at all. Now, the town of Eastover will ensure the event. Um, we'll use the same insurance company that we used last year, SMIC. The entire event will be covered and the town will assume all liability for any incidents that may happen. Um, all precautions will be taken to prevent any incidents from happening. And uh that's what I have, you know, for the security plan.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Lauren, do you have any questions?
How many sheriff's deputies she says you had?
Eight.
Eight?
Yes, eight.
And you had security personnel with the deputies?
Yes, we had eight security officers.
So we're talking about sixteen security personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question about alcohol. When are you going to sell the alcohol? Or what kind of alcohol are you talking about? Wine, beer, or, or what beverage are you referring to?
Okay, that question is for me. Um, we um, we'll not be selling any alcohol at all. On last year, um, they were allowed to um actually come in with coolers. But we did not um, you know, advertise that alcohol was okay or anything like that. So no, we will not be selling alcohol, will not be giving away alcohol or anything like that.
But you are allowing coolers, correct?
Yes.
Are you going to have a checkpoint? Will they, will uh check the coolers?
We will have a, a checkpoint. Um, that'll be checking bags. Um, and um, we can check the coolers. That can be done.
Excuse me, how many people are you expecting and what are the hours of operation?
Last year, we had around five hundred people, so we think it'll be around the same number. The hours would be around six to ten PM.
And the coolers theoretically is, you're allowed to bring your own beer or alcohol to the event then, right?
That is what we did on last year. We really would, you know, we really want to have it at the park. And if there's any adjustment we need to do to make um, you know, the plan better, we can do that.
Why do y'all have it so late to ten o'clock?
Um, a- actually, um, it's, it's on that Friday night and um. I believe it went a little later on last year, but this year, you know, we said the hours could be six to ten. But it actually, it doesn't have to be that late. We're willing to adjust, you know, anything that we need to. It does not have to be that late. It can, and earlier.
Do you have any problems after dark?
No, we didn't have any problems last year. It was held at the Wilson House in Gaston. We didn't have any problems after dark at all. And this is, you know, separate from the parade. Um, you know, which is different on Saturday. We, we try to get everybody out around, you know, when it's dark, but this is, you know, just a Friday night. So no problems after dark.
When is the festival?
May sixth, May sixth and May seventh and uh Friday night is that May sixth.
And you would like to have the festival in our facility on the sixth and the seventh, or just the sixth?
Just the sixth.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Allen. I have a question for you. Any particular reason why you decided for venue change? I think you mentioned last year was at the Wilson House. And this year you are requesting the Eastover facility. Any particular reason for that change?
Yes, it was, it was mainly because the residents of the town of Eastover. Um, they, a lot of residents wanted to have it in the town because it's a town event. They didn't want to have it outside of the town.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Eastover is a nice place. I mean, if you'd had no problems last year, I went there one time. I think I went there now. And the only problem that I would have with Eastover is after dark, other than that, I'll find.
Hey, um, James, I agree with you. Uh, I don't have a problem with the time. I don't think five hundred peoples. Whether it's a thousand with that, that much security, I think. I, I don't have a problem with this event personally. I mean, it's a public party. People want to have fun. Um, you know, Main Street events happen on our Main Street in downtown Columbia and they serve alcohol.
And alcohol.
And five, I'm just saying. So I don't see why it should be any different for this group, as long as they name us additionally insured unless. Our count, you know, our council tells us otherwise. Where names additional insured, I'm sure we'll review the binder and that insurance policy and make sure that we're covered properly. I have no problem with this event.
I have no problems with the festival, but I do have problems with alcohol. We will be liable if anything happens on the property.
That's why if I made a deputy, they, they got sixteen, that's enough.
I think the festival is a great idea, like just have issues with alcohol. What else do you want? We allow alcohol, people use.
I've done too many festivals. And I brought coolers that contain alcohol. It's, it's, it's an individual thing. Or you, if they've got the security in place, it sound like they have explored all possible avenues. Of what possibly go wrong. And they are, they have, they have ensured. The town of Eastover is taking on all the responsibility. And I think this is a good thing for the town and for RCRs. Cause it gets, gets us a little bit, a little bit of recognition, but if I'm, that's, that's, like I said last time, that's originally my hometown. And sometimes towns like that get a very bad rap when it comes to things. And I think this is. They didn't have any issues last year. It goes off without a hitch this year. I think this is a little positive for the town.
I agree with that. I agree with that too. I probably put it on there and said, how you going to get help?
But they're going to have insurance, still naming us as official insured.
We can vote. Would y'all like to take a vote on the head of festivals?
You, you need to vote on it. Who knows if it's some issue or not.
There has not been an issue, but we do have a sign that says no alcohol at the park.
I'm gonna take.
That's great. Okay. I'd like to call a roll call.
I make a motion that given stipulations in place and their approved review, we approve the use of park along with alcohol. Um, for the Eastover barbecue festival.
Wait, then that to make sure that staff reviews the insurance and to make a final opinion, but upon, you know, their, their recommendation, I would go along with it too.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have a question, uh, prior before you make a vote or before the motion is made. So if the sign that says no alcohol, what's the point of that? Are we going to allow other events? Or you wanna make a motion to have we revisit that signage and verbiage before we allow them to have the event on the sixth submit? I might guess Jamie is the sign, this is a sign presently up there for alcohol use.
Yes, all, all of our parks have signage that says no alcohol and our facility use agreement states that alcohol is restricted to our community centers and our adult activities since when there are rentals. With security, of course.
With security.
With security.
That's what you do, Kira. You know, when they have a green here, they're gonna bring alcohol anyway. People bring it whenever they ask for. You know, same thing. We just say if you can approve, so like for Main Street events, five points that are public spaces, alcohol is not, it's not allowed unless the government only approves it and you approve it for the specific time of the festival.
That, that would be, uh, Madam Chair, that'd be my suggestion is that we make a decision at this, this meeting, uh, to make sure that we vote on any event that's gonna be, that's gonna vary from what we have posted uh, in terms of signage. It would require a vote, uh, for each independent request. Have you got a motion to accept and then we did it? Eastover Park on Friday.
Make a motion to have the event on May the sixth at Eastover, given staff's review and approval of the insurance and policies.
And policies moving forward.
And policies moving forward that this is a one-time waiver.
Madam Chair, also on that agreement, it is just, um, beer and wine that we have on that agreement. So I just wanna make sure I, I let you know that as well.
Give me a second.
Yeah, second.
Second.
My second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanquell?
Yes.
Voting in.
Motion has been started and approved.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you very much.
Yes, on February the seventh at six o'clock, uh, myself and Felicia Dumble attended the Sweet Potato Festival. Um, we actually had on the phone as well, this Alita Jackson, in case you have any questions. Uh, the Sweet Potato Festival, um, is going to be taking place in April. And so they are looking to reduce the number of vendors that they normally have because of COVID. The requests that they have made in previous years, they are continuing that same request. Also, our property management division has been working with Richland County Public Works to try and get the, uh, driveway, uh, taken care of before the event. They have also already put in place the additional driveway that they did previously so that EMS can get in and out of the park other than using that, uh, one driveway that we currently have at Hopkins Park. So the Sweet Potato Festival Committee was pleased to be able to have the event again. And, uh, the only thing that they are looking to do now is a COVID waiver for anyone that goes inside of the building and for their vendors. Um, because outside, normally for the events that we have, we do not have everyone sign a, a waiver. We will, in some instances, especially when COVID first began, we would take temperatures for things as our cotton tell event. But as we have moved to this place and the numbers have decreased, uh, we have not been taking those temperatures when the events are outside.
What day in April is the festival scheduled for?
April the thirtieth.
April the thirtieth.
Thank you. On the COVID issue, I'm not sure we're required to do that anymore. Are we, Mayor Bob? Do we have the mandate? I know we can have a sign up there, mask used inside, but.
I think most of the man, uh, mandatory mask and all are not, uh, you certainly can have some, uh, requirements. And then the requirements that would be checking for temperature, things of that nature, certainly could do that. I don't think you.
Can't we just see what's going on around that date and then whatever the rules are that our staff has suggested that's what we do? I don't see why it matters, whatever.
Well, that probably would make sense because COVID changes so much.
I need to just say do this.
Does anyone have any questions about the Sweet Potato Festival? Can I get a motion to accept the date of April thirty for the Sweet Potato Festival? Issues anyone like to discuss?
Make a motion to accept the date of April thirtieth for the Sweet Potato Festival.
Give me a second.
The second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanquell?
Yes.
Voting in.
Thank you.
We're right along. On the next item on the agenda is new business, congressional man approval of intergovernmental and joint use agreement between R C and County. It was previously the dog park. Madam Chair, this item is about this being brought back to the board. Um, actually started in November of twenty twenty prior to the new board membership. We wanna make sure we give you some background. Um, and improvement, an agreement was approved between Ermo and R C R C so that they are able to, um, construct Rawl Creek Park. Um, March first, twenty twenty one, and then them was approved. And then March, May twenty seventh, um, a joint use agreement was approved that was needed for the park grant that has been applied for by the town of Ermo. In December of twenty twenty one, staff met with the assistant town administrator to discuss some final items that were found within the document that need to be updated, including correcting the site address, adding the skate park instead of the, instead of the skateboard track and other elements missing that were in the original schematics. So the staff has been speaking with the attorneys and the attorneys have been communicating. And we have recommended a new agreement to be drafted that covers everything correctly for the project in sight and those three documents that were previously signed. And we also included a new intergovernmental and joint use agreement. We have Mayor Barry here that can give you some additional background and he's been intimately involved in this project from being one along with his staff. Um, we, of course, as a team support it because it provides additional recreation of facility that has been out of compliance or recreation for a number of years. And it provides the citizens with an opportunity to have access. Mayor Barry, do you have anything you would like to share or Madam Chair? That's where I have the background. If you stand ready for any questions. Uh, Deputy Director, Ms. Tenee Williams has been working directly with this project. Now, would you like to speak?
Absolutely. Thank y'all very much. Uh, as y'all know, we've been working on this project since twenty twenty. Um, we have, uh, the town of Ermo is excited about doing this joint project for y'all. This is your, this is your project, this is your park, this is your dirt, it's y'all home. We're about ready to spend one point two billion dollars to renovate this unused tennis court. Bring it into, uh, into our community, into a place where we can have a dog park, a community garden and a skate park. All those entities are committed to be done. And, um, we need to get this paperwork signed off on so we can start planning commanders and Oprah and stuff in our community park. Um, we're ready to go. And we are excited again to have this opportunity to work with y'all on this.
I'd like to know why, uh, we had to sign this again and what's the new agreement? What's the difference between the old agreement and the new agreement and why we had to revisit it?
Well, it was two things. The address was incorrect and that's to correct it. One thousand one hundred thirteen project. Uh, the park grant that we're going for, since we don't own the dirt, we, they are requiring it to be specific to the letter of the address, of what's going in the park and the fact that we have a twenty-year agreement with y'all that we will maintain that or in all of the facilities in it. And that's what we agreed to do. Um, those things were required by part itself for us to submit for that part grant. Now, once we have this language updated that you have in front of y'all, once that, once that agreement is updated and greeted, we can submit that part grant and we can simply go forward and, you know, submit the application and hopefully get about a hundred twenty thousand dollars worth of funding from Parks and Recreation. Right, took you so long to bring this back. Very pardon, this was done in twenty twenty, right? It started in twenty twenty. Okay, so. And what took so long to get back? No, it wasn't us getting back. When we found out that there was a problem with the application, we came back to y'all and said, hey, the address that was on it was incorrect. We had to correct the address, but you can't just simply change it. You have to get approved from the board that.
So you came back on this before and now?
Yeah, twenty, was it November twenty twenty one?
Yes, I came in twenty twenty and then back in March twenty twenty one.
And then, I, yeah, when I was chairman, I signed off on this paperwork twenty twenty one, right?
I believe it was.
And.
Why they know that?
Because it wasn't, not, it was before. This.
No, no, no.
November twenty twenty.
November twenty twenty nine.
Oh, okay.
Now, you would have been.
Commissioner Lutte needs to complete a statement. Did you finish?
No, I was just gonna, just gonna say that we, uh, were big supporters of doing this. We, as a commission before, the newer commissioners were here, we had a lot of debate about this. And the board voted on doing this. The paperwork was filled out wrong, it was signed with the wrong address and I guess some descriptions. And I think that for them to get the hundred twenty thousand dollars or whatever the amount is, that they need to get the paperwork right very, you know, soon because this, this is coming up quickly. Um, and I think this was originally put forward by, uh, Nathan Ballantyne, um, in my delegation.
Oh, Richard.
The whole Richard delegation wanted, you know, this for that area and we, we don't really have any dog parks in, uh, Richland County that we run, so, but I guess you'll be part of it, but still. It's pretty exciting, so. Move forward here.
Anyone have any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a statement. Um, this is a brand new board and this is the first time that they've heard about the dog park situation. So I don't think we'll be voting on this tonight. I wanna get a firm decision.
Okay, hold on a second. Sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, the reason why I'm here tonight is to get the sign off on the agreement. We've already debated it. And again, Ermo's prepared to put one point two million dollars into your park, your dirt. And, uh, the only thing we're asking you to do is to give us this, we already got the agreement approved. We're just simply made the changes to the dates and to the other non-technical information that the park people requested, like the location and timeframe, twenty-year, I guess, term of your term. That's, that's all the things that they require. What happened to that?
Was it a typo? Was that?
Obviously.
It was one thousand one hundred thirteen project. It had one hundred one, one hundred thirteen project.
Was that considered a typo?
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, here's what I think, the, the clear example is everybody knows what property is. It's just like in some cases, you might, uh, either have a typo or you miscue something. And to get the, the loan, they, because they don't own it, they just need it to be corrected. So I would say this is a technical, uh, correction. Uh, because obviously the location, uh, is something that had changed. Uh, it, it's just the description of it in the document. So I would call this a technical, uh, change. Uh, but because it's a grant, uh, you know, all the eyes have to be dotted.
That's true.
Chair, I quickly interject.
Excuse me, um, oh, did you, uh, do the contract for us?
So I, I did.
Yes.
Um, and the, the consideration, the main, the main change here is there was a, an address that needed otherwise be updated, but the agreement that's currently in place didn't consider some of the additional treatments and also didn't consider part grant originally. So the, the plan originally was just to come make an amendment, um, and just simply supplement the agreement. As we started getting into it, we started layering in all of this additional part consideration. We were then working off three separate agreements because you had the original agreement, the addendum, and now a third amendment to incorporate the part provision. And so the thought was, we're already committed to it. The thought here is you've got a twenty-year agreement with them in place currently. If we don't amend it, they can still move forward unless we terminate the agreement, they lose their money and they don't get the grant. So this is simply formulating a new agreement that basically expands the scope and gets them a hundred twenty thousand dollars free dollars. So I, I think at, at that level, I know it was a former, uh, commission that ultimately made the approval. But, but the agreement is already in place and if we don't take action to approve this one, the part money won't be a part of the money that they spend in the park.
So we have to have a new signature of the new chair or can the old chair sign?
You're, you're the chair. I'm, I don't, I'll sign anything. I don't care. But we need to move this forward so we can get on.
That's what you said, the time limit on whether they get the part grant.
Yeah, I think you should sign it. You ought to have a motion just to agree that the technical changes that, uh, that was described. And then you could sign the document as soon as you can.
Mayor Bob, it, it is actually a full amendment, a restatement of the agreement. We, we, you know, we need a formal resolution, which y'all have, so.
You got it. So, yeah. I hope to leave here tonight and get signed agreement. That's, that's why I'm here.
And we should, um.
So I can make a motion?
Have you reviewed this, the new?
Yes, ma'am. My, my law.
I just wanna make sure you reviewed it.
Yes, ma'am. We were good. And so the, the, the biggest issue that we kept running into is that part kept making adjustments after the fact. So we sent them a draft and then they'd go quiet and then they'd send them another, they'd send a couple of comments back and we'd send it back. And so literally the agreement was being negotiated up until about an hour ago. And now everyone has signed off on it and the version that you have in front of you is compliant with part. It's compliant with, your, your lawyers feel comfortable at it. The town's lawyers feel comfortable at it, the town staff feels comfortable with us. Um, and so I think it is in everyone's best interest to move forward on it so we don't lose the grant.
Can I make a motion to approve the new intergovernmental and joint use agreement between Recreation District of Richland County and the town of Ermo for the new agreement to replace the old intergovernmental agreement from November sixteen, twenty twenty?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Moll.
No.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Paul.
Yes.
Vote in. Okay. Six, two, one. Six in favor, one opposed. The motion passed.
Thank y'all very much, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. When I have the executive directorship board. Actually, Madam Chair, the items that we discussed previously in unfinished business were a part of our review report until we relax, get some actual, to our, and out. So we can move on with Jane Russell, our public information officer.
Good evening again. Of course, this is a part of the meeting where I would like to share with you all of the great activities that have been happening throughout Richland County with our great staff that has continuously to work amid the COVID pandemic. And so we've had some great programming that has come through Richland County and has served the citizens. So our first one that I'd like to talk about is our game awareness coop fest. It had to be rescheduled because of inclement weather. But it happened on February fifth at Eastover Park, it began at one o'clock, ended around six. And there were more than three hundred and fifty attendees throughout the entire day. They weren't all there at one time, but throughout the entire day, you had about three hundred and fifty attendees. Thankful to our commissioners that were there to assist us on that day, as well as we had some of our local representatives and some of the different basketball teams. There were motivational speakers, there was food, and everyone had a great time. It was such a successful event that we are looking to duplicate this event throughout the county. We have a new exercise program here at the Adult Activities Center. It is the Pound Exercise Class, which is a cardio jam session inspired by the infectious, energizing, and sweat-dripping fun of playing the drums. And so you'll see, this is one of the first classes that we've had with this particular exercise class. And also on February fourth, throughout the agency, we acknowledge Wear Red Day. Of course, the month of February is heart healthy month, and so many of our staff members wore red in honor of that. On February ninth, we had our annual RCRC Service Awards, where we recognize our staff that have been with RCRC five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and forty years. And so you'll see on the picture to the left, we have our most tenured staff member, Mr. Paul Buddy Rochester. He has been with RCRC for forty years, and he is a part of our property management division. So congratulations. He also has brand-new grandbabies, so we're really excited about that. And then also, if you look at the picture to the right, in the front, you will have our Employee of the Year, Mr. Chaz. He is in our IT department, and so he was voted to be our Employee of the Year. He is holding down our IT department by himself. So congratulations to Mr. Chaz for being our Employee of the Year. Our HR department put together our RCRC Service Awards. It was a great event. Normally, this is our annual quarterly, one of our quarterly meetings. However, due to COVID, we could not get all of the staff together. So we separated this event, and we had our service awards so that our recipients could receive their awards. And then last Friday, we also celebrated with the rest of our staff. So we were very excited about the great work and longevity of the members of the RCRC staff. On February the eleventh, we had our annual Sweetheart Ball at the Gardens Ferry Adult Activity Center. Normally, this event houses around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. But of course, due to COVID, it was just around fifty attendees. And again, for the service awards as well as the annual Sweetheart Ball, I want to thank our commissioners that were in attendance for both of those events. And so this is one of our active adult members event. And so many of our citizens that attend are over the age of fifty, but that does not limit them from having a good time. So this is always a great event, and it is held annually around February fourteenth. Also, our Bless Your Heart event is for an active older adult as well. And so we had two separate events again because of COVID. This one is held at Bluff Road Park, and it was held on February fourteenth. And you will see that the Richland County Sheriff's Department decided to stop by for this event as well. And so there was a photo booth, several participants, and everyone there seemed to have a really, really great time. Again, thank you to our commissioners that joined us on this day. On February twelfth, there was the Super Bowl Day of Caring, where we had a service project. And if you have not been to our Rosenwall School near our Pine Grove Community Center, you must stop by. You'll see here, we had a group of individuals that came by and cleaned the Rosenwall School for us. And then also on the following Sunday, they actually have a Super Bowl party. So we really are thankful for the Pine Grove Steps to Academic Service Learning Team After-School Center and the Young People Department for having this event. We are very thankful for their community service project. We have a new program, the Little Labors at the Bluff Road Park, which is a foam ball tennis clinic. It is a growing program, but our staff is there to help facilitate getting our little citizens acclimated to tennis. And so we have about seven participants in that program right now, and it is growing. And it is held on Tuesdays once a month at the Bluff Road Park. Also, for the month of February, see, we had a lot of love to share. And so our community outreach coordinator, along with Alika, who is one of our interns, went out to different assisted living facilities and delivered Valentines to the residents there. They were very excited to receive those. And so we have interns that are throughout the agency throughout the entire year, and they are very involved in the projects, and they come up with some of these projects as well, along with learning different aspects of the agency. So we'd like to make sure that they can get a full experience while they're here at RCRC. On February eleventh, at Polo Road Park, there was a family Valentine's Day dance. There were about forty-five people in attendance for that dance, and there was fathers and children and couples and entire families. And so it was a very well-attended event. It was the very first time. And so we're really excited about the family Valentine's Day dance. There were few events that had to be canceled because of low participation, but this was one of our successful events. And so we're very, very proud of this event. My last event that I'd like to bring to your attention is on February ninth. We had our Teen Nighthawk, which was at Friars Gate Park. There were only about twenty-six people in attendance, but we're very proud of that number because it is being held throughout the entire county. We have higher numbers in different areas, but we're very proud to have the numbers that are here at Friars Gate Park on February the ninth. So we are committed to not only our active older adults, but also our teens, as well as our little citizens, as well as our adults. And the RCRC staff is doing a phenomenal job with executing a variety of programs even amid COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Make a report. I've asked the staff to provide you with the COVID nineteen report every week. And I'm proud to report that we hit zero positive and zero isolated for February thirteen. Thanks. Very good. At this time, I'd like, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss project profiles that are very complex in a personal way. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we are excused to go into executive session. It's got the answers in the keynote vision.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Moll.
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Paul.
Yes.
Vote in.
Everyone, I take the throne except for the commissioners and the attorney. You take the decision this way.
I'd like to move to accept legal counsel's recommendation and lay to the personnel matter of all the executive director.
I second that. Mr. Moon, you have a second. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Moll.
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Paul.
Yes.
Vote in.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Moll.
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Yes.
Vote in.